I just thought I'd make a motion, since we have a quorum here tonight. A motion to open the continued public hearing for the residences of Carrick Mines LLC 237 Dodge Road. Site plan special firm announcement.
Well, I mean, you're really gonna need to...
Yeah, that's all right. So, I just wanted to make an announcement on that.
Yeah, I mean...
Just to move to Jill Mann, the representative, and Rich Williams, the engineer. Have other obligations till about age fifteen.
I would suggest opening the public hearing to continue here till age fifteen.
Well, my point is, the public hearing has been opened.
It is, yeah.
It was opened, you know, six weeks ago, whatever. You know, it goes in... This is a continued public hearing. You don't have to open each continued public hearing.
Okay, so I just want to...
And furthermore, speaking to the substance of the thing, I mean, they were allowed at the time at seven thirty. They're not here at seven thirty. And plus, I understand they're gonna drop a new concept plan on us, and we haven't had any opportunity to see.
Well, maybe...
So, I'm wondering if the preferable course would be to just continue this to a later date.
We have Larry here, and I'd like to go over some of the memorandums.
Yeah, okay.
Just because we did spend time in the subcommittee. That's all. I don't think we can go into a, obviously, a revised concept plan at all.
Okay, good. I agree with you.
Because our town planner, Katrina Leary, had asked that be shared not only with herself, but also with the members through PDF. And that wasn't forthcoming, that didn't come.
They tried hard, they just couldn't fit it to us.
So, all right, so, let's continue that. We also have a... Some other business which we could do until we have to open a public hearing for Sprint Spectrum. Would you like to do some of the other business?
Oh, sure, sure.
And I'll sort of take some time to...
If I may suggest there are just a couple items that there's people here for.
I'm just gonna turn it over to you, yeah.
Right, there's... The first one is the request for extension, Meeting House Village, Wilson Road subdivision bond. The bond expires on this August thirty-first, and I believe Said Abu Zahra is here to explain the request.
Would you two like to come up? As you know, we had a bond reduction, I believe, the last time was the end of two thousand nine?
Yes.
To do the paving, was it? The final paving and some landscaping?
No, we did all the final paving, except for where the connection is.
Right, for that fall. Obviously, the connection we're talking about is the connection at the end of Wilson Bond Lane going to City Lane. And this thing... So, this document that you brought us tonight, would you like to explain it? I have read it. I believe I understand what you're trying to do. It seemed to be difficult, and the numbers match.
Yeah, to put it in one...
All right, would you like to first say who you are and why you're here?
My name's Said Abu Zahra, the trustee of Abu Zahra Family Trust, and I am here with regard to the bond tripartite agreement with respect to Meeting House Village. And we have all the bond according to the cost, as estimated by the town consultant.
Which I believe was John Moore at that time?
John Moore, yes. And we had the same thing last year, and kindly I request here to extend this another year because the appeal is still pending.
Really?
Appeals do not take that long. You know, I mean, they just don't, Mr. Chairman. They don't take that long.
Yeah, I mean, we have a history here of...
I wonder if you could give us a docket sheet showing that the appeal is still pending? Can you have your lawyer send us a docket sheet from the court showing that the appeal is pending? Because, you know, I'm...
It's pending with the DEP.
Well, I'm not familiar with the DEP. I thought the whole reason for the delay was because there was a Superior Court appeal and a State Supreme Court appeal. That's what your attorney told us the last time.
I will check with the lawyer and get the exact information.
I think he needs to document that actually this case is tied up in litigation. Because, you know, we've been hearing this for how many years now? How many years, I mean, ten?
Four or five.
The last reduction was in '09.
This is not a reduction hearing. This is more of a shuffling, this is more of what, changing the cash from one bank to another?
Well, this is, instead of dealing with two banks, I decided to deal with one bank.
Right, and that's the cash which... The cash that you're switching over...
From the stone and bank to the savings bank.
To institution.
Yes.
For Wakefield Institution for Savings?
No, it is the Savings Bank, which is a Wakefield bank.
And then that still leaves the line of credit, Mr. Graham...
From the savings bank.
And that line of credit was... So, the document you have in front of us now is for the sixty thousand...
Sixty thousand and fourteen dollars.
Sixty thousand and fourteen dollars from the Abu Zahra Family Trust into deposit account at the Savings Bank, right? And there remains two hundred thousand dollars, which is held in accordance with the terms and agreements of the tripartite agreement, right? And that's a credit line.
Yes.
Which, as we can see in our chart here, is primarily slated for the reconstruction of City Lane-Wilson Bond intersection. It leaves the balance of one sixty-seven, two fifteen for reconstruction there. City Lane Extension, four thousand one hundred. I think Mr. Graham is familiar with all these. Street Trees, one thousand two hundred. As-built plants, nine thousand five hundred. Stone bonds and pins, seven thousand one hundred. A subtotal of one eighty-nine, one fifteen. Prevailing wage adjustment, twenty-three-six-seven. Ten percent contingency, forty-two-five-thirty-two. For a total of two sixty-fourteen, which is the two hundred thousand, and the sixty thousand fourteen attached, right? That you shifted over. So, this is not a bond reduction at this point.
Right.
Obviously, we would have to have Mr. Moore go up. Are you coming... Are you planning to do that in the future?
Well, it depends. As soon as we get the release from the DEP or the Superior Court, I am ready to finish it. As soon as they do, they allow that, I'm ready, willing, and able to do it.
This is primarily the connection? The connection primarily?
So, basically, I just... Well, you know, how long can we allow this to go on? I mean, really, appeals do not take that long. I'm not sure about... I'm not familiar with the DEP, but State Supreme Court appeals do not take that long. And we've been hearing every year for, I don't know how many years, that you can't do anything...
The same thing every year.
So, I'd like to see documentation, if there's active litigation going on, whether it's before the DEP or before the State Supreme Court or the Superior Court. Because I just don't believe it anymore. And I don't think we can just accept, you know, representation that there's litigation going on for all these years. I just don't find it hard to believe.
Mr. Chairman, could I suggest there's almost a month left until this expires. Possibly, we can get an update and not sign this and have it notarized until we receive just an update explaining the appeal.
Well, if you vote on it tonight, pending on getting the documents from the lawyer, that would be okay?
Right, yeah, that's fine. And wherever the hang-up you're... I mean, I don't know whether the hang-up is with the DEP, with the State Supreme Court or the Superior Court. Wherever you say the hang-up is, I like to see documentation that the case is being actively litigated.
Is that sundarit? Is that sundarit? All right, just take a motion to basically allow the performance secured by line of credit, basically, the cash to be... Somebody's working with one bank, right?
Yes.
Rather than two. Stonem and Savings Bank is now out of the picture, right? Stonem is up, right?
Yes.
So, because your old ones had Stonem, right?
Yes, yes.
The previous couple that we did over the last three years. So, again, this is not a bond reduction. This is just a legal document to assure that the performance bond is still in... What was it? All right, just want a motion to pending some documentation and some more detail to our town planner as to what is actually occurring. Right, it's DEP. It could... I mean, obviously, if people are familiar with that intersection, it does border, you know, the pond, Wilson Pond, and it does have some drainage structures that, obviously, at this point, about twenty years old and non-functional. So, I think it might be a good idea to talk to the Conservation Commission as well.
So, if you vote to extend it, you know, for this year and bring you the letter from the lawyer about DEP or and the Superior Court?
Right, well, I want to see not just a letter from the lawyer, but document... The docket sheets for the litigation.
Okay.
Whatever else the lawyer feels will show to watch that the case is being actively litigated.
Or if there's some appeal pending at the DEP, some documentation.
Yes.
Okay, now the motion.
I make a motion that we approve the extension of the tripartite for a one-year period, subject to Mr. Abu Zahra providing us with documentation that his case is still being actively litigated.
Second. Second, David Jacob, all is in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yes, I...
And this does have to be notarized and signed by you and Abu Zahra, so I don't know if you... Do you want to set up that time tomorrow or the next day?
What has to be signed? It actually has to be signed by the entire board.
I don't think... In years past, it was always signed by the board. Oh, today, tonight, that can be signed by the board, but the notarized page...
Oh, that page, yes. We need to sign that.
Is this the best copy you have?
Before...
Before this one?
All right, would you prefer two originals? Do you want two? Two or just one is sufficient?
Do you want two or not?
So, I guess we'll set up a time. Maybe tomorrow I'll give you a call, and I'll see when Brent is free to... He's a notary.
Okay, you can have a clip. It's okay, we'll study.
Thinking it into the next part?
Yeah. I thought it was a mistake. Click, grab that pen. So, I'm... You're a friend.
You always end up burning it.
Yeah, most of them. And now, do they usually sign in their areas tonight, or is that... The bank isn't here, obviously.
No, they don't have to sign.
They don't have to sign.
I would take a copy and sign it in front of the bank and then...
That'll speed away, this is lottery cards.
So, you tape them?
Before we finish, though, we have to have this information on.
Right.
So, that's... Again, that's continuing, okay. How long this is...
Oh, I know.
Predates you?
Yes.
How long this is...
Well, I'll speak with the lawyer tomorrow.
And I've been on the board about fourteen years.
Yeah, and I've been on a lot of it since then.
Only on when I was on conservation. So, this goes back in the nineties, before two thousand...
What can we do if someone litigated us? I mean, what can we do?
I mean, they did have... There was a lot of litigation going on. I don't deny that at all, but I'm just questioning whether it's still going on and still providing for finishing that intersection for so long, but...
The litigation that took place in the past, the court ruled for us. Now, we had a Conservation Commission approval, and he appealed that to be... And that's where we are.
Okay, I need to open up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I need to open up the seven forty-five public hearing for Sprint Spectrum, SPR Wireless. Modification of four sixty-seven Hable Street, site plan review. Application package that was... Where's the ad?
One letter, so... Do you want to open it?
Yeah, I do, yeah, yeah, I got it. I'm gonna open this hearing, motion to open the hearing down. We're going to undertake motion for continuing. So, in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter forty-eight, the Raleigh Protective Zone by law, the Raleigh Planning Board rules in ready. The Raleigh Planning Board will conduct a public hearing Wednesday, August eighth, two thousand twelve, at seven forty-five in Town Hall Annex Meeting Room. Thirty-nine Central Street, Raleigh Downs, relative to application for approval of a site plan. The applicant is Sprint Spectrum LP, represented by David Archibald. Fourteen Hollywood Avenue, Anza, Rhode Island. The property owner is the town of Raleigh. The site plan applications for modifications to an existing tower structure under Section eight point seven point three point one point one, the Raleigh Protective Zone by law. Modifications include replacing six existing antennas with three new antennas and replacing the existing battery box with two new battery boxes. Four sixty-seven Hable Street, assessors now thirteen, Lot two. Applications, plans, drawings, and documents are on file with the Raleigh Planning Board and are available for public inspection at Raleigh Planning Board office. Town Hall Annex Thirty-nine Central Street, during public, office hours, per its Brian Chairman. Motion.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
All second, please.
Second.
Second, Jeanne Trillum, all in favor? Normally, with the application which you have in your possession, and look down a few of these as we pass, we have all the information. Based on some latest information from the Conservation Commission, the order conditions, based on a notice of intent that was originally filed in two thousand four, ran out three years later, as they do. They're only valid for three years, and the applicant never received a certificate of compliance, and has a number of items to finish. They were first notified by Brent Baselik, a Conservation Administrator, back in May of this year. No response, second filing July eleventh, and recently received a response this week from the Tower Co. Assets LLC. Now, you might help me out on that tower. They actually...
Tower Co. is the one that has taken over and owns them, and then they're leasing them out to Sprint Spectrum, but the town, Raleigh, owns the land that it owns itself.
The work in essence that needs to be done are order conditions, numbers fifty, fifty-three, fifty-five, A. I will read it because Brent took the time. To finalize the permitting process, they need to complete number fifty, upon authorization, removal and proper disposal of erosion controls. Fifty-three, stabilization of slopes within the buffer zone. Fifty-five, A and B, written request for a certificate of compliance. A written statement from a professional engineer, the Commonwealth certified, and working with them, in accordance with the plans and documents referenced in the order conditions. An as-conditioned by the commission, deviations must be noted and explained. And then finally, an as-built plan, which is fifty-five, C, prepared and signed by a registered professional engineer/land surveyor, showing gradient structures in the area, subject to this order conditions. The as-built may be the originally submitted plan with changes highlighted and explained. They are in touch now with the Conservation Commission. And this... They did have a date, but the Conservation... The date was extended based on their correspondence with Brent. So, I think we just have to... They shouldn't have, yeah. I mean, the owners, they were a little bit contrite. They really shouldn't have let it run out for three years, which is... It's not... It's a site... It's not like they have to go before the common column to refile, because it's obviously not an ongoing site that's going to produce pollution or... It's more of a... It's more, it's never been stabilized, and it's a little more of the paperwork function, but they never received a certificate of compliance. In other words, they're in violation right now, so we really can't approve something that's in violation with Mass state laws. So, they're in violation of wetlands protection as we speak right now. So, just to move to continue it to the next meeting.
Make a motion.
I don't know when that's going to be.
Twenty-second or twenty-ninth, I think, or...
Twenty-second, Brent.
Twenty-ninth is bad, too.
Oh, we're talking about this month?
They're not pressing...
Twenty-second, twenty-second.
Projects.
I can... I can be about fifteen minutes late.
I can follow you.
I can do this, twenty-second. You're out for the twenty-second?
I'm out for the twenty-ninth.
So, twenty-second was fairly good for him. Can we continue that to seven forty-five and the twenty-second? Which will be a little late. Okay, motion to continue this public hearing.
I'll make the one.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Twenty-second to seven forty-five, Sprint Spectrum.
This is just site plan review, correct?
Yep.
I figured that they're not raising the height of the tower, so...
The clock does start ticking at the opening of the public hearing.
Again, if I went back to that, they were replacing six antennas with three new antennas and replacing their battery box with two new battery boxes. That's the scope of the work, this.
But they're not raising the height of the tower, correct? So, doesn't require a special permit. So, three people could go down.
I don't believe he did, no. When I talked to him, he didn't mention it.
Yeah, it's just a second. Is that the question?
Yeah.
It's just a second.
I didn't see anything that said raising the tower. I mean, he's pretty familiar. He does quite a few of these. And has, I mean, so forth, and knows the scope. All right, any other questions?
Someone made a motion to the second and...
Yeah, yeah. Second, I did, yeah. Seven forty-five and twenty-second.
Are you looking for a list? The next one that someone would be here for and waiting is, we have an A and R at two thirty, Weathersfield Street. And there's also three hundred new brickwork, term plate. It's up to the chairman, who wants to...
Might as well move up some of these, yeah, sure. Remember the A and R? Larry, you want?
We have an A and R, two thirty, Weathersfield. The applicants are here. I'll get it here, too.
Take a look at this.
It's actually pretty streetcar.
I haven't looked at it before. Order, because the...
No, I have not.
This just came in.
Thirty-first.
The board's gonna be telling me tonight what they want me to do.
I just came in this morning, so I'll wait. It's my turn.
Sorry, it's a second.
First, can you say your name?
My name is Giannis. I'm currently resident on the plot plan Lot One, the property two thirty, Weathersfield Street. And I am the one that's looking to purchase the first lot of the second lot, of my grandfather's lot. And what we're looking to do on the plot plan, this is the existing, this is Weathersfield Street. What we're looking to do is subdue by the property, where you get up from the existing dwelling, and level zero to step away from that the temporary structures are within the bounds and center to the back of the property line.
Oh, so this is one big lot now, was I mistaken?
Yeah, this is one four acre lot.
Okay.
Currently in motion for a two.
Five, three yards.
Two acre lots, yeah. It's really good-sized lots.
Yes, and each one would have a hundred fifty feet of front?
One has two hundred and eleven feet, that one, a hundred and seventy-eight.
So, it's on a public way, it's not just a...
There's an existing garage on the second lot.
Says it really, it's part of the separate...
Well...
Does our garage remain?
That re...
Some existing structure is truly not pertinent to Form A.
No, it isn't.
The real pertinent issues are whether it's a public way, number one, whether it's adequate signage, number two, and definitely exposed to fire.
Did you see any issues?
I'm not very clear.
Those are the pertinent issues, and there is an intermittent brook, is there?
Yes, the brook goes through, and there's a small pond in the back as well.
Damn.
Yeah, it goes through as well.
Multiple.
Says he goes six to see.
Like likes to see.
Okay. What year is the house?
All right. Any other questions or comments? Don't flip. Larry?
I attend a motion, approve the A and R.
I'll make the motion to approve the A and R.
I'll say. Second, I'll flip here, motions may be made. Ball's in favor?
Aye.
Should we sign this, please? Would you like a representation of our vote tonight, lighting and short panel from the board today?
Thank you.
Besides just the fact, we haven't always done that in the past, but if we start doing it now, that's why I think we can appreciate it, or something happens.
I'm going to usually sign for the final.
Everybody, she here?
We've got another one, I don't know how many you need signed.
I know we need to sign the mine.
Right, and it's always good to sign one of these for the files.
It is, sure.
So, just one, sign for the final.
Okay, I'll sign them. Hold the mine up for recording, we have two other stuff, one part filed, one due.
I'll take one anyway, please. You got it, huh? I didn't give you enough.
Okay, I'll say. Oh, sure. It's called, hold that one up. It's a storage folder.
Put the first one in.
You're going to keep those two?
You're going to get one.
Get one of those.
Yes.
Okay.
They didn't even give us a topography.
Mr. Mayor, ask.
So, is the applicant also?
All right, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
All right, have a good night, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Peter, we're back in the floor.
Your presence, your presence might have made it, what made it, was that? The Raleigh Town Council.
I have a hope, it's on my way, it's certified. How's that, how's that coming?
Well, very well.
And, Mr. Chairman, I don't see anyone here from Jill's-
Yeah, they, no.
But, I'm just hoping no one is here from Market Basket, which I want to just update.
We have neighbors of Market Basket, I can see. Yeah, Katrina wrote to Mr. Matthews, John Matthews, and has been in touch with, they're coming, who's kind of like the neighborhood rep, and inviting John, John, so he could come tonight, the assumption here, and I guess been verified by the neighbors, that they're working on a landscape plan, landscape architect.
Slowly.
So, hoping that we set the meeting date on the twenty-second, that we can have Mr. Matthews.
This, this was the little fax I got back, it's just my letter to him, sent back with the note on it.
Yeah, Mr. Matthews, I'll read this into the records, this is from myself, February 15th, 2012 meeting, members discussing with concerns, again, with the newly installed sensing system behind Market Basket, resolve was to work on a landscape plan and address about its concerns regarding a removal of the existing wooded area, as you know, that, because that's where the reserve was, six months has now passed since that meeting, planning board requests that you attend the August 8th, update the board the status of the landscape improvements, contact the planning board office by phone, email to confirm your attendance, this is written July 30th, Mr. Matthew wrote back, I have a scheduled conflict, cannot attend on August 8th, please put, put this on your September 2012 agenda, and this was CC to ten Ward Conservation Commission, Richard Carr. So, I guess we'll contact him on the twenty-second, not, we'll adhere to his request that September noon, hold it to that, okay, is that, that's, Mr. Carr knows that as well?
August, I'm sorry.
Mr. Carr knows that as well?
He wanted to-
He's updated with this, did you talk to Dick today?
Yeah, he knew, he knew that you weren't going to be really bringing it up tonight, and he was ju, he just is waiting to hear when it will be scheduled, so.
And we don't have a plan to look at this.
I know, he did mention September, but you want me to try to get across what's going on?
That'd be good, yeah, if you can, because if they have, if they've been working on something, they should have something tangible to show us.
Right. I think, I, I should relate, Mr. Carr felt strongly about not letting it wait until September, because it's been so long.
Okay.
Been so long.
It has been quite a while. Especially if they plan on implementing something that is false.
Right.
Neighbors have been patient. All right, I believe we have, Rich, is Jill here?
She's not, we can come to the other.
That's fine. Is that all right?
What?
It's up to you.
If they don't, probably can start with that.
Do it once.
It's up to you. We have a lot of minutes, I don't even know if we can get through them all.
I hope we don't.
What?
I hope we don't, there's a lot of minutes there.
I know, I mean, it's held off this long, if we get through a couple, give people-
I'm going to push you.
I know, but some of them, they've been written by three different people, so we need a chance to digest them. Do we have copies in our hand yet? Yeah, okay, well, so that's why, another reason why we're not doing them all.
You can use this, that's what it's there for.
We had much luck putting stuff up there last time, didn't we?
I'm happy to do that, thanks.
Larry, can you have this?
Can you look at it? I want to bring to the board's attention, just to, and also for people that are here, excuse me. Right now, we have, to kind of go through the history, we have in our possession, 423 12, Board of Health comments, 727 12, Highway Department comments, 613 12, Fire Department comments, and the applicant response, 620 12, Larry Graham's, Larry Graham's comments, 612 12, and on top of that, we have a memorandum from Larry, at the request of Miss Man and Rich Williams, dated July 27th, and that's a response to two man 620 letter, and response to the 7612 revised conceptual site plan, which, as people recall, was simply made a reduction in four units and some change of layout of the garages primarily, that was, that was the plan, the conceptual plan from Set 761.
That's correct.
And since then, and some of this, just so, Rich, you know, I know you have something new here, but, so, we really can't, you know, the main focus tonight, I want to get us up to speed with, with Mr. Nick, and you could probably represent these as well, the response to the subcommittee comments that became in your possession, and then Larry Graham's memo regarding that, and then your response, which just came across the wire today.
From Jill.
Jill.
Yep.
We're not going to be able to get-
And, and that's fine, I think, I think-
We need to digest that.
Our focus tonight is just going to be to talk about what happened between the last meeting and tonight, and to see if we can move forward with, with a design that's amenable to both the board and to us, so I think maybe it makes sense to just step back a little bit, go back to the last meeting, and take everyone through what's happened since then from a concept standpoint, because I think, if we don't have a concept that's acceptable, then, you know, the comments are meaningless. So, at the last meeting, it was clear that-
With Rich, you're going to introduce yourself.
I'm sorry, Rich Williams, with Williams and the garages, with me tonight is the project proponent, Ralph DiGiorgio, Jill is on her way, she should be here within a few minutes. So, at, at the last meeting, it was, was clear, you guys made it clear that you didn't like the layout, and there were at least areas of the site that were too dense, I had a conversation with your consultant, and although I didn't-
Which is Larry Graham, who's there?
Mr. Graham, yes, and although I didn't-
I'm sorry, hate to interrupt, does anyone have a copy of the last concept plan? I'd kind of like to look at it, as we're talking about the new one.
I only have small scale.
That's fine.
In fact, I have one, you still have.
Great, she'll get it.
It was, it become clear that, that there were areas that were too dense, and got some feedback from Mr. Graham that the area that was focused here, or the area here, there were some units out front and a unit in the back, was particularly problematic, so we changed that area, got rid of a duplex over here, spread these units out some, and-
Can you show exactly because of the butters, what you got rid of, just, you said over here, can we just point out?
There were, there were, there was a duplex and another single here, that we got rid of, so we got rid of three units in that location, in a unit over here, which we made a single instead of a duplex, and in doing that, we spread these units out so that they had some additional space between each other.
Mr. Chairman, do you think you could just scoop back so that the, is the camera cannot see what he's pointing at, right, is he right in front of it? Yeah, that, that would be good.
It'd be like the weather, right?
I have spent time at home watching these.
Oh. So, we submitted that concept plan through Larry Graham, and, and I understand that there was a, a meeting, and it was suggested or requested that we drop five units from the plan, and in particular, they were the units that were out front, there was a duplex here, and three units that were out close to the Dodge Street, and I called the client, and I'm going to let, I'm going to let the client discuss the financial aspects of it, however, I talked to him, and I said, they'd like to take those five units out, and he said, I can't do it, so, from a, from a financial standpoint, the project doesn't work, and with 31 units, so, I said, maybe we can find a way to accomplish, get rid of these units, and, in those locations, and still have the, the project be financially feasible, so, that's what this plan is, this plan eliminates the units, these two units, and these three units out front here, and replaces them back here, and the way that we did that was changing singles to duplexes, so, I think on the, on the prior plan, we had 15 or 16 singles, this plan has six, so that we can accomplish the same, same number of units.
So you've gone from 15 singles to six, is that what you said?
That's correct, that's correct, and the setback from Dodge Street to the closest unit is 190 feet, which is, I think, 25 feet further than, than the prior development that is proved, that the, the one from Windover. And then, the closest unit out nearest to the entrance is about 260 feet, so the, the building part of the development is set back substantially from Dodge Street.
Except that, there's, there's two that are closer to the property line at the top, so you have your circle, and then-
These here?
Those two, yeah.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Well, we had, again, we had to add duplexes in here, and we're still honoring the 150 feet from the, the structures, the existing structures.
Would this require you to cut into that ledge?
Uh, it would, it would, we would have to take, the back part of these houses would be required last time, probably, I mean, we haven't done testos yet, but anticipate that it would, or hammering.
And, and would there be a retaining wall behind those units, or how would it look like, it would just be a-
It would probably be a rock face.
Rock face.
Right.
How deep is the power line?
10 feet.
Does that take away the so-called backyard, the individual space for the people who live in those units?
Well, I mean, they would have a backyard, they would have some space between the back of the building and, and the rock face, I'm sure.
Just because there are butters that are here, I just wanted to read what we're referring to, it might help elucidate, the subcommittee agreed that the revised conceptual site plan is still too dense, and this is from Mr. Graham's memo, July 27th, 2012, suggested a further reduction of five units to a total of 31 units, it was recommended that units one and two be eliminated, and that replacements of units three through seven, 31 through 36 be revised to affect a less unit congested area, they also recommended a redesign in the area of units 12 to 18, suggested that the loop roadway end 75 to 100 feet easterly of its present terminus, and that those seven units be reduced to four units, their reasoning was to pull proposed housing and roadway further back from the Dodge Road scenic corridor, but that's, and this is a, in a response?
This is in response to that, that's correct.
Okay, there's one, we'll read that. So how many units, Rich, do we have now?
36 shown on that plan.
All right.
My name is Ralph DiGiorgio, the developer, we've been working on this project for quite some time, and, you know, originally, we were, we were looking for 40 units to make it work, but, you know, we, we came down to 36 because we knew that you wanted a reduction, the issue is, is that it just, financially, we, we can't go below that, it doesn't work, and, and I think everybody's in agreement that the asset here is the golf course, nobody wants to lose the golf course, you know, the board doesn't, the town doesn't, the neighbors don't, and I certainly think that keeping it, it, it's, it's better for the community and, and the development, but I can't make it work at less than 36 units, it just doesn't make sense, and the only other alternative would be, you know, to come in with a yield plan and do a conventional development, but, you know, that's, you know, 45 units, 45 lots, but it, it closes the course, and it just, you know, it, I, I don't think it's, it's just a wise choice to close the golf course, we're all trying to, you know, keep the golf course, and, because it's a, it's a beautiful course, it truly is, and, and this is the only way that I, I can make the project work, I really can't reduce the number of units, so we're, we're really trying to see how we can come to terms and make it work. Originally, I really was very excited about the single units. But, you know, again, it boils down to the unit, units, and the only way to make it work is to create more duplexes, to create that corridor. I mean, that's 200, almost 200 feet, average, almost 220, 230 feet from Dodge Road, which is a substantial amount that we've, we've been willing to...
Sorry, what do you, what's 230 feet?
The corridor, that, you know...
Or the average distance to the houses.
The average distance to the houses?
Oh.
That's it.
How far is the loop from Dodge Road? I'm sorry.
And, and don't forget, you know, this is, this is a heavily trade area here as well. So there's not, there's not a tremendous amount of visibility from Dodge Road in that area. So, it's, you know, it's, it's a beautiful, it's a beautiful development, and, but unfortunately, I really can't reduce to that amount to make it work. It's, it's too costly of a project. And that's why we, you know, kind of need to settle on the 36, the last year. But, you know, if it's not acceptable, then I don't, I don't know if we can move forward with the project, or we have to come back with some other design. But I think we've exhausted all other designs that keep the golf course, and that seems to be the main focus.
How long will the golf course be closed? Or do you intend to be closed during...
We do not intend to be closing the golf course.
Well, you're modifying some holes.
Yes, we're modifying some holes. On the seventh and eighth hole, we might have to do a temporary green until the grass grows in. But, you know, we fully intend to keep the course functioning.
So the entity, as reading some, hi.
Hi, sorry.
Just Ms. Mann's response, which again, we're not gonna get into deeply because it just came today, and I don't like, you know, getting really into something that the board hasn't had a chance to really digest or go over, which is not fair to anyone.
Sure.
Unfortunately. But, so it's leasing out to the same owners?
Yeah, the same, the person who runs the course now, Bert Page, he leases the golf course currently, and he will, he's gonna lease the golf course for me in the future.
So really, as much as possible, kinda like what's happening at New Meadows, the course stays open, and they're building those units at New Meadows in Knoxville?
That's true.
So similar to that kind of situation?
Yeah, yes.
Are you familiar with...
Yes, I drove by a couple days ago.
Yeah.
I drove down there a couple.
Yeah, they're, they're building.
A lower...
It's more like condos.
24 units.
Yes, 24, 55, four units, six, four units.
Over a couple acres, not a huge footprint.
Tiny.
And I went on their website, there was no information about whether the golf course is going to be, have public access in the winter time or...
None. It's maintained separately, independent from the, from that entity. So the people who acquired the golf course, I mean, acquired the subdivision, same, almost the same scenario with an independent golf course or operating, uses, and put it apart from the homeowners association and the developer.
Well, I mean, I don't know, I don't wanna interrupt your presentation, but, yeah, yeah, keep going.
You know, so basically, with respect to the golf course, we intend to keep it fully operational during the construction. And again, like I said, we'll probably put temporary holes on the seven, temporary greens on the seventh hole, and then the, there is a tee box that we can currently, it's actually the ladies tee that we would use temporarily until the new tee box is grown in. And other than that, the remaining holes stay exactly the same. And then, we also plan, you know, fixing up the clubhouse and, you know, upgrading it to complement the buildings as well. Other than that, you know, some tree work that needs to be done on the course, a lot of trimming, pruning, and cleaning up. So, we brought in an expert on that to give us a list of things that need to be done with respect to the course itself. So, that's about, that's about it.
Whose responsibility is it for the parking lot for the golf course?
It's my responsibility. We have to put in a septic system underneath the parking lot for the clubhouse.
Are you talking about maintenance or...
Maintenance, annual maintenance.
Just any upgrade, any drainage, any upgrades to the parking lot? You put a septic system?
Yeah, we need to put a septic system in now, because the current system for the clubhouse is, would be in the new development area where it currently stands. So that has to be removed.
I guess it's moved, yeah.
Right, and then a new one. And then we're gonna, we plan on repaving the parking lot, onto line striping, and some landscaping around, and so forth.
Yeah, 'cause right now, it's just all in purview. When you, when you repave it, where's the drainage going to the parking lot?
Goes into the golf course. Runs over the, runs down here, over the course, down into the swale, and ultimately into the water.
Well, while we're on that point, if we agree on the concept, then we're able to move ahead, if we agree. I would like to see the country club parking lot addressed in our plans, the plan here submitted with us. I mean, and number one, we had a question during our subcommittee meeting, whether we needed that much parking for the country club, given that it's the same size parking lot you have now, and you'd be getting rid of the restaurant and function hall, so have your parking needs gone down?
Well, we have reduced the, the parking spaces, I believe.
You have?
Yeah, there is some reduction, maybe 15% reduction, although...
The, the shown on the slide?
Just off the top of my head, yes.
Yeah.
That's, this is new striping plan and edge of pavement. The driveway entrance here is now, that's to be closed off and moved to here, and this is the new striping plan.
Yeah, we talked about, how many, are there 70-something?
No, there are more than that. 50, it's about 100 spaces.
Is that a lot?
Is it a lot?
I don't know, I mean, I...
What do you require for a 90?
You know, it's probably more than you need. I forget what was required by zoning.
Well, we really don't address country clubs, so our rules don't address what the parking needs of the country club. So, maybe other towns have...
I looked, I looked it up, and maybe it was someone else's zoning that addressed how many, it was number of spaces per hole, number of parking spaces per hole. And we had, we have more than that. We could, we could look at...
Well, if you, if we proceed further, I'd like that to be addressed. You know, as I always said, you need that many spaces, basically. And that, you know, I'd like to approve the landscaping plans for the parking lot as well as for the condominiums and development.
And what you're doing architecturally to the clubhouse, what do you approve it as?
Maybe I've missed something along the way. I thought it was the intention. But the homeowners, are they going to be responsible for the golf course in that part? So it's going to be subcontracted out? How is that going to work? Because in the other OSRDs, all of the people own all of the land, even though it's under conservation, they still are responsible for the open space. Right, this, this is totally, a totally different concept. So the, the open space is, because it's a golf course, the responsibility rests solely with the lesser, I mean, pardon me, the lessee, so the golf course owner.
Well, I, I think you said in your memo, your letter, that the country club would be owned by the homeowners association?
If, I said if, in that response. If it goes, the question, the question that Mr. Graham had brought up was, if in fact the country club go, I mean, pardon me, the golf course goes away, and it no longer is operated as a golf course, what happens? Well, in that event, if that happens, then the open space would be treated identically as your open space is under the other regulations. So the homeowners association would succeed ownership, and then would be responsible, but only to the extent it's no longer a golf course.
Okay, so who's gonna own it while the country club is operating?
Well, it's still owned, it would still be owned by the declaration, it would still be owned by the entity that's going to acquire it. And then what we'll probably do is some sort of revisionary, revisionary clause that if it can't be sold and owned completely as a golf course, then it'll go back to the homeowners association, because it has to be used, and that what, is open space.
Right. Cliff, can I, can I read this just so I can, for the butters? We had discussed, and Mr. Graham, I won't go into all of them. We suggested a deed restriction to assure the golf course use and other approved open space use in perpetuity for the long term. And we requested that Ms. Mann began the process of drafting, suggested deed restriction. Said final documents should be as explicit as possible as to the future of the open space parcel, should it cease being operated as a public golf course. Questions arose as to who would own it, how would maintenance or removal of the existing buildings be handled, security, et cetera, landscape upkeep. Kirk requested, Katrina, our planner advised a selectmen at the town attorney's assistance may be needed in this matter. And then the response, which again, is today, I'm not gonna get into great detail, but this is dated August day by Ms. Mann, who's here, will begin, this is from you. Begin to draft the restrictions, and we'll provide a draft to the subcommittee, which again, is basically the planner, the consultant, and the chairman, the vice chairman of the planning board. Ownership will be turned over to the homeowners association.
Hold on.
Yeah, okay, I'm just reading again with the response, we can, if at that point, the open space is no longer operated as a golf course, the space will be open to the general public for use as walking trails and other passive recreational use. So we're trying to handle the contingencies.
Okay.
And they have comments that, again, this...
The reason I brought that up is because our, our Bible does require that the open space be conveyed to a corporation trust or other entity separate from the homeowners association. And I guess I misread, so it needs to be held by someone else, another entity.
Again, according to our Bible.
Right.
You wanna refer to which section for the butters?
Sure, it's paragraph D of 6.4.11.1.
Hello, sir, thank you. Do you have anything else to say? I just want the butters to speak.
Can't, Rich, when's the architect gonna come on board to help you out? I know I've talked to him a couple times over the phone, and I've seen some sketches, which are promising. And that may help with individualizing the units. You may be able to find more singles if you're looking for more singles with the plan around. Right now, this drawing doesn't really do you a lot of justice on the driveways to the units. I don't think they need to be that wide until they get up closer to the garage. In other words, what's a driveway, 12 feet?
Well, that's, that's true, but if you park, if you have a car that's parked in front...
You're pointing at one that you can't do with...
Front, this one, yes. This one here needs to be that wide, because you have to have two cars.
Look at, look at a whole bunch of them that you can skinny them down and then...
Can skinny them down, for sure. This is just more of a concept for unit placement. I tried to show some driveways on the side. I agree, this, this guy here could, could be skinnied up.
We're not at that, that point yet.
They seem to be too, some of them seem to be too long while we're at that, talking about this, too.
Depends on whether the side entries or the front entries still, but we...
They need too long.
It seems to me like you have awful long driveways for this kind of a development. I don't know, I can't read the numbers, particularly the, you don't, you don't have a, do you have a plan on a short piece of pit that I can...
No, we're not there yet.
We're not there yet.
No, we weren't gonna get to that.
I have, I have.
Yeah.
I caught this in.
I'm talking about these two in particular, 30 and 29, seem to have very good, and it seems a little funky, too, because 30 would be closer to the other street rather than the street it's accessing, so...
And we could take the door, take the driveway off that side. The reason that I took it off the front is so that you wouldn't see the driveway, I'm sorry, the door, when you're driving up the street, which is another door that we could eliminate, looking at coming up the street. I could pull that forward and take the drive off the side.
Frankly, I don't like the cut into that ledge. I don't like it at all. And it just seems to me, you have a, well, it seems like it's kinda crowded down in that section as well. It seems to me also that there's just a lot of infrastructure down at the end of that road, and I don't know what the answer to that is, but you have basically this big loop and only two units coming off of it. Is there a way to, is there a better way to do that? That's the only, and you have this emergency access road that's gonna go out to Dodge with, I guess, a crash gate on Dodge, isn't that all that great either? Is there a better way to do this? I'm just throwing out the question.
Would you, would you prefer a loop?
I don't know.
You see a loop?
You're ending up, oh, no.
I don't think you can.
What about a hammerhead?
Well, I don't know.
Fire department might not put the hammerhead.
Rich, you read the fire problem.
The other person that should get involved at the next stage is a landscape, first of the landscape architect.
We're getting ahead, David.
We have a landscape architect, and...
I'm gonna keep bringing it up, Rick.
We have a landscape architect, and he was involved at the beginning, and he did, he did plans for landscaping, but we're just trying to get to the point where we can solidify the number of units in the general location, and then we're gonna do another detailed design so that we can have that stuff, and that, and that will be one of the plans that we will provide, is a landscape plan. We have, Hawk Design is the landscape architect.
Right, now that we're incorporating the parking lot, too, in the house.
It almost seems as if there was a way to cluster these into three groups with more distinct break between the three groups, that it would work better. I don't know why, but, in other words, right now, we've got a development that is a continuous making element. And if there was a little bit more gap, like tighten up someplace with landscaping, to say, "Okay, this is section one, section two, section three."
In the front part of that, it's a golf course problem, and then you got the septic system.
I'm just throwing it up.
And then you have the protection...
We, we could do that, but in order to do that, we'd have to pull these things this way, right? Because if you're talking about one, two, three, we'd have to create a gap here, and to do that, we'd have to pull things this way, so, I mean, we, we could, we could...
Did we tell you to push it back on that side?
Yes.
Yes.
There was a duplex here that, that we removed. We could, we could push these closer and provide a heavily landscaped area here, and that would give you the three groups, and I could look at some alternatives to get the same number of units with a different configuration out of that circle. I'm happy to look at...
I'm just throwing it, just throwing it out there to you, Rich, to see, see if that's an idea.
Yeah.
Along those lines, Larry?
Question I have at the conclusion of the subcommittee meeting, I, I sent to the members of the committee, that the 16 single families are really making this whole development spread out. So if you eliminated 10 of those, you're down to six. I don't know with the developer here, I'm still looking at if you combine, if you had no single families, I think you could maybe get to three different distinct groups that David's talking about. It's gonna give you a lot more land to work with in between units, and hopefully, you can keep the same number, or near the same number that you're trying to reach, that being That's, that's what I see. It's contrary to what David said about more single families, but I think you're, you're trying to work in a certain area. You've defined the area that you're working in. It's not getting any bigger, and when it does, you're going into less. So, to me, it's, it's pretty obvious. If you can do more, or all duplexes, you're gonna, you're gonna get a real gain on this thing.
I'm sorry, I don't quite understand what you're trying to say.
No single families, all duplexes.
No single families, all duplexes.
I, I think that's gonna, it's gonna allow you perhaps to get to the same number of units that you're trying to get to, the 36, and open, you know, open up a lot more land. You've already...
You've already done that by eliminating 10 of them and gone from what the subcommittee suggested, as a number of 31, staying with your 36.
I mean, maybe, Rich, that would, if you went to duplexes, you could get rid of the two at the last, you know, the last, you know, if they combined them down closer to the septic system and over by, you know, the first hole of the golf course. I guess that's the first one.
It's an idea. I certainly believe that the combination of singles and duplexes give you better variety and better choice for various buyers. And it makes it a better looking project in a sense, too. So to catch 22 here on open space versus single units.
But there's certainly precedent, you know, on these dense developments around here. There's a lot of duplexes, you know, you should-
Well, throw it out to them to come up with the best plan.
Yes, so it's, like, Nunez is all common, right?
And they're quad, quad units.
Oh, that density is, it's just, it's not, it's a little paracent of the density there.
Are there any single families in any of the CP bearing?
No.
Those are all duplexes, too.
Now, they go up to four units.
They go to four units as well.
But the minimum is a duplex?
Yeah, and, you know, I think-
Well, if we're concerned about this, singles and duplexes.
Yeah. I don't think I even want to entertain anything above a duplex because those middle units, they just don't, they're just too big, long buildings, they're not very desirable looking. And, you know, it's nice to have, like, you know, on three walls, you know.
What do you think about what Mr. Graham just said?
I'm thinking about it as I'm speaking.
Yeah, we don't have to decide.
Well, but the thing, the thing is, let's, if we can agree that the number's 36, I'm willing to work with the design and I know, David is a David. I know that you, you did speak with Peter, and Peter did a number of sketches that we did bring and I agree with the comments, you know, he's done a nice job.
Not number 16.
Not number 16?
He may have dropped it already.
But, you know, I could just-
But what you might be, what you might be able to do, with the landscape people and the architect-
I have a, yeah.
Is to figure out what your closest dimension from unit to unit would be. And it might be able to bring them a little closer together. As long as people feel they have privacy and ownership of a certain portion of their land, it should be okay.
No, I agree with that. It only helps. It definitely helps. But here are some of the different concepts that he came up with since the last discussion.
And if you mix them, I'd say, when you come in, you're going to have to do the elevations of strings of these so we know how they're going to work in sequence right down the road.
And that definitely is going to be something we give to you and we have a more concrete concept plan. It's just so difficult to work with it because now we don't know, maybe we're going to go to all duplexes, you know, singles to duplex, where we're going to have the side drives, where we're not, where we're going to locate. So until actually we have a concept plan that is more palatable to board, which we hope this one is going to be, because we did address those density issues in front, we addressed the fact that people needed to have the open spaces, their backyard, if you will, is in front as well as the back. So I don't know.
Well, I, I'm listening to everything and I agree with David with respect to having the singles and the duplexes. Larry's idea does make a lot of sense, but I like-
You may be able to get a combination of both by tightening up certain things. The idea of three or some grouping, 36 may be too big a neighborhood, but if you're getting 10, 12, 10, 12, or something, and getting a finger of landscaping, it's dense landscaping between those clusters, you're breaking the scale down. I mean, there are some people who are going to live in some of the first units, they're never going to see the tail end of the front because they're not going to go down there unless somebody has a good cocktail party.
Right. And obviously, the majority of these units, we want on the holes of the course because the views are magnificent. We really want to try to keep them in those positions. You know, I think I'm definitely willing to work with you, any suggestions, very good suggestions. If we can agree on that, the 36 units, then I think we can come up with, you know, we can definitely work, work together and make a good looking development.
Well, I was, I actually have a suggestion, and for what it's worth, I'm going to toss out, I wonder if Rich, if you could take that down.
Sure.
Do you want to use the name?
No.
No, I have a-
I do, too.
We didn't have much success last month.
I'm looking at the loop on which houses, say, 28 to 30, 23 are around, right? Okay, so you have a small loop. I'm wondering if you can, and then next to that, there's a bigger area. I'm wondering if you, right there, I'm wondering if you could make that almost like a town common by making it one larger loop. You follow me?
Or connecting it?
Yeah, like we're doing this.
Instead of making that little loop?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, that's a good suggestion, because you get some, you get some land there.
I get that.
That goes along with the-
And then you have front, like, front yard.
One of the clusters, that's what we're looking for.
It'll be a nice-
Well, the other thing it does is it unifies the whole development. It has a, it's town of, it's town of-
It's not going to be a very big town.
No, it's not huge, but it's-
I like that idea. That's a nice idea.
You'd be able to play proquet out there.
It does give a-
I can see, Rich, you're also trying to achieve, Mr. Graham had comments about there was a deficiency in guest parking. You seem to have thrown some of those all over the place inside those.
Yeah, I mean, we've got some additional guest parking. We've, on this plan, we have 32.
Throw them in the loops.
32 spaces.
Well, you're able to get two unit, two guest parking spaces in most cases at each unit.
I think every unit has, has the ability to park two in the garage, to park two in front.
And what's the width of the road?
20.
20.
Yeah, I mean, we're-
Larry, I was, I guess, in your opinion, on the hammerhead issue, were some other configuration at the end there? Just not conceivable.
I think it's doable. Obviously, I think the fire department would be the primary adversary to the board to weigh in on that, but I have no issue with hammerhead and-
But if there was this other big loop, that would, you know, actually make the cul-de-sac arguably shorter, so.
Is there a smaller cul-de-sac or is that, is there, are we able to make a smaller cul-de-sac?
Well, I'd have, again, we'd have to go through the fire department and the answer's yeah, it's possible, but.
What's your outside radius right now, Rich, on that, yeah, Larry?
This is, the outside radius is 55.
That's a, that's about them.
That's, yeah.
It also does accommodate the visitor parking, so I guess we're trying, you know, we're trying to meet those demands as well.
Well, yeah, we could have landscaping in the inside, we could have landscaping on the outside.
So that, we look at that, we actually, on the inside, we could, could potentially make it a little bigger and then landscape a larger area on that, on that cul-de-sac and then landscape on the outside because it's providing, it obviously not only the emergency exit is, but it's providing-
Yeah, I mean, we have room and-
Water availability for landscaping, so maybe, you know, you look at it like that, it looks so stark, but once we get the landscaper, the landscape architect in, he can put some nice complements in the interior and on the exterior.
I would talk to the fire department on that because one thing they might really like there is that their emergency road does not have to come in and start a loop. If you continued that road on through to the point where it becomes the emergency road and then you hammerhead off of that, you know, for your turnaround.
Right.
You might, you might be able to take some of your guest parking off of that hammerhead as well, as long as it wasn't on it.
Because the fire apparatus would actually have the ability to that emergency road.
Just to shoot straight in and out.
So they don't need to turn around there when they have that gate.
Right.
That's the same thought I was thinking.
Just go right in.
Straight in and it's built your parking into there, then you hammerhead turn.
Yeah, we could do that. I mean, we could, we could, I'd like to pull the access as far this way as possible. It really is going to be determined by the drainage here because we do have treatment here and here. So I would pull it, you know, with that, with that scheme, I would pull it this far, you know, as far this way as possible and do the hammerhead here. And you could maybe pull this unit up a little bit or, you know, decrease the pavement there, but it doesn't really help you back here.
Right.
If that's what you're, yeah.
No, it just seems like there's a lot there.
There is a lot, but again, like Attorney Mann said, it also gives you a lot of opportunity for landscaping and if you, if you do the hammerhead, there is no interior landscaping, it's all paved. And it's probably not as much pavement as that, but it's still substantial.
But you still can landscape on the exterior.
You can landscape the exterior.
Right, with a hammerhead, it's just so much concentration and imperious because you still need all that breath, but with a turnaround, you can actually minimize the width and still turn around and have pretty landscaping in between. I mean, I know from a visual aspect, if you look at a cul-de-sac and if you look at a hammerhead, you're going to like the cul-de-sac better. Does you have beautiful plantings inside there?
Maybe if you showed the landscape.
Well, not if there's parking spaces inside.
That's true.
I mean, we can, we can eliminate those. We, in order to achieve this-
You can make the pavers.
We can, we can do a lot of different things, it's just, we don't even think we need them. This much visitor parking, but we were directed to maybe add to it, which is why we did. I mean, I could do-
I'm trying not to add parking spaces in front of units because I think that that detracts from the, from the appearance of the project. So I'm trying to keep the spaces away from units and there, you know, there's not a lot of opportunity, so I, I thought that that was an opportunity.
Can the people who live in these condos park in the country club parking space? Is that not allowed?
That was my next question.
It is two separate properties, but I think during the holiday season, you know, if it's Thanksgiving or Christmas, you know, people have company, the golf course really isn't going to be open, you know, we could probably discuss that.
With that many spaces, some shared element to it.
It's going to have-
That makes sense.
We have to be careful because if it's, forget, example, Easter is a huge golf day, huge, so you wouldn't want to necessarily have that conflict.
Depends on the snow.
Yeah, there you go.
So it's a nine-hole course.
This year, it was a huge golf day.
The way things are going, every day, maybe.
I know, right?
It's a nine-hole course with 100 spaces.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, we could, we-
Well, again, I will, I will look at that and we'll see what we have for-
Ten spaces for a hole.
I need to know how many.
The other thing that we may want to look at, if we, if Rich does the calculations and finds out that, you know, we're heavy on the parking spaces for the golf course, maybe we can change the line, or something like this here, and reverse those parking spaces so they're accessible from the opposite side as an overflow parking.
Yeah, I think the mailbox thing and the little bulge, that's kind of funky right there anyway. It doesn't allow for any, that's real tight there.
We love it. Well, yeah, it is tight, but we have, we have to have some place, sort of pull off to grab their mail.
Your little ramp there.
What's that?
Is there some kind of ramp there, too?
There is.
There has to be.
The mailbox has to be ADA accessible.
So that's a possibility of reconfiguring that whole edge, maybe taking those spaces out of there and moving them and changing the site, the lot line, you know what I'm saying, Reggie? So basically, eliminate these, these six spaces here, you know, bring this property line over here more and we can create a lot more landscaping between the two and then maybe over in here, just put a little bit of overflow parking here. Or perhaps, maybe just make this, on this one side, the overflow for the development and then just create a better buffer zone between the two properties with landscaping. That, that would, you know, be nice. But we have to have some type of turnoff for someone to get the mail. We don't want them stopping in the middle of the street getting out, especially on a 20-foot wide road.
Have the butters have some comments? Can you state your name, please?
John Gorman, 246 Dodge Road. Just getting back to passive recreation, we're going to have a number of children in this development. Where are they going to recreate? I live across the street, I don't particularly want them recreating right across the street from me or any of, any of the other butters probably would feel the same way. The golf course isn't open for passive recreation, so.
That whole front would be though? That whole front is, what is it, which is almost two acres, that front? That open space, yeah? So there is plenty of area for them to actually have some sort of passive recreation use. We're not envisioning a, you know, a big turnout of children in this area, but even if they were, we do plan on having that front available. And then if we do put in that one area with cul-de-sac, that could be, would be available as well.
On the issue of passive recreation, I wasn't persuaded by your reason for not having access for things like cross-country skiing in the wintertime.
Can I, can I read that?
Sure.
Again, this is stated in the most recent memo, and this addresses passive and active recreation opportunities. The planning board had discussed having some additional benefit of passive and semi-active amenities over the golf course. When the course was shut down, for example, in the winter, the subcommittee, we agreed, the subcommittee agreed that we'll be looking for some passive, semi-active open space amenities within the residential area in future plans. Also want golf course open space to be available to the public in residential areas for walking cross-country skiing. Other, during the course of shutdown for the winter, acceptable to limit by signage, trail massed end or other means, access to car paths or other shows only such that greens, tees, and fairways are not damaged. Also acceptable, you know, it's obvious to restrict it, no motorized vehicles. Response by the petitioner, which is, you know, the developer. Developer will make accommodations for open space amenities within the residential portion of the property. Please be advised that the golf course is leased to a private third party and has been independently owned for years by the same individual. Petitioner is not able to make public walking trails within the golf course. And Vice Chairman Pierce didn't buy that.
Well, I mean, leases can be, leases can be renegotiated and how long is a lease for?
Five years. Five years. The issue is a liability.
And I'm sorry, but just my other point is, other country clubs, country club developments like this do a lot of this. We know that we've been told that Turner Hill does allow cross-country skating in the winter. So, and this country club used to have cross-country skating in the winter, so it seems like that's very true and that would be a big amenity for people in town. I think people in town used to enjoy cross-country skating in the winter there when it used to get snow.
Again, we can't control a third party that's scaling easement over a piece of property that's controlled by a third party.
Well, I'm sorry, but the third party is going to agree to seduce this in perpetuity as open space.
This third, well, no, I'm talking the third party owner of the golf course, not the-
I mean, the lessor, the less-
The less, oh, he owns the, he owns, I'm sorry, he owns the business. So the lessy would have to then agree to allow another party to enter the property. So when there's damage, who does he go to and who polices it and who's liable for it? And if it's for the benefit of the town, is the town going to be liable for it? Who polices it? I mean, who does all this? I don't know how Turner Hill functions. I know Nunez doesn't allow it. I know Firecroft Country Club doesn't allow it. I know that the Middleton Golf Course doesn't allow it. I know that, I mean, I could probably keep going. I'm pretty con, I know for a fact Salem Country Club doesn't allow it.
Yes, they do.
That's something else. Salem Country Club? No, it doesn't.
Current with you.
Salem, the private one?
Salem.
Oh, Salem. It's with the one down, the one down by the water there, by, by the bridge.
That's Kernwood.
Yeah, it is not permitted.
That's the Kernwood. Salem is the one off of, down, where Ruwan, where they just opened up that new rest cabin?
Oh, I know.
I'm not familiar with the permit.
At Salem, yeah, they don't allow.
No, no, not there. That's private. That's a lot of money to get in.
I mean, I know Georgetown Country Club doesn't allow it. They might now, maybe it'll start because it's a private, it's a private course now. I mean, public-private, say?
Katrina, I was wondering if you could contact the Ipswich Town Planner and try to find out more information on what does happen at Turner Hill and how they worded it in the agreement and whether it's caused any problems.
Or even Kernwood as well.
Sure.
I'm, I'm with us, Kernwood. I just don't know.
Salem, Marvel headline.
Oh.
No, no, no. Salem, Kernwood Bridge coming from outside, going over to Salem on the right-hand side.
I'm just curious, what town it was in?
On the way to 148, it's in Salem.
So, back way from Beverly to Salem.
Right by the Harvard, I mean, you know, going to Danversport. I don't know. I see people cross-country skiing, sliding all winter. It's a big public sliding.
Let me just make one point.
I know some people, I mean, and some people just do it and they don't, and it's not necessarily permitted. They just go out there.
Yeah, but that's the police, but if it happens, it happens. Liability's still there.
Not if it's not permitted.
I still see, I still have a problem calling this open space development if, if there isn't access to the public to, to use the open space.
Well, I think we, I think we have to agree that we can't open the country club while it's in operation. We can't allow hiking, you know, while, while they're playing golf there.
Yeah, we're out up in winter, right?
So, we're talking about the winter.
And the bylaw allows it to be used as an open space credit to keep the golf course.
Right.
To be, you know...
And, you know, and, well, this is one of the reasons why we've been pushing for open space to be created within the development, so it's not just the country club.
Which they're agreeing to do.
Well, yeah.
Well, we don't see it yet, but there's an agreement here in writing that provides some amenities within the open space.
Oh, we definitely have.
A playground on top of the septic system across the street from me is, you know... I moved to the country because I liked the rural character of the town.
This one?
You know, you're putting a playground across the street from you with kids that live in 36 units. We don't even know, we don't even have an estimate as to how many kids there will be.
Well, I, you know, I think we have some idea how many kids there will be. And firstly, I don't think in this type of development, you're going to see a lot of children. When you look at Fox Meadows Development, which is 24 units, granted, it's less than that, but it's 24, I believe. The last time I asked someone who lived there, there were no kids at all in that development.
How big are the units?
They're, they're comparable.
As big units, if such.
And it's, it's not 55 and over, so legally, there's no restriction there. But, but, you know, at least the people that have been buying those units are, do not have kids, you know. There may be one or two there now. I don't know. By and large, they don't have children.
And there's pretty good data on that and I think we said it would be anticipated that there would be maybe four, I think.
Eight, eight of the four units, point two units.
Point two.
Not a lot.
Are any other butters?
I have a big problem with the close proximity of the...
Can you please give your name? I'm sorry.
Robin Pagliro, 0261 Dodge Road. I have a problem with the close proximity of that one duplex next to the four homes, really two homes, I guess, from the side, on the north side. Vicki lives in 150, 160, from structure to structure. What is it, from property line to structure? Not my structure to property line, but from the property line to...
Yours is...
That building.
Yours?
No, that one.
That structure is... Well, you're asking about this one.
I'm asking about both, actually.
Yours is thirty...
No, not mine, not my home.
Yours is 35 and this one would be 70 from the property line.
So, it's 35 feet from the property line?
No, yours is, yours is 35. Ours would be 70. Yours' structure is 35 feet from this property line. Ours would be 70 at the closest point. But from the closest point to your property would be 90.
So, you're taking down most of the tree line that's there because there's not many trees from my house? Yes, there is. I live there. There's not many trees from, between my home, I guess you want to say, and the golf course?
Well, there would be some taken down.
And you're cutting into that.
There would be some taken down, for sure.
And blasting? Window over, which is a highly respected developer, wouldn't even blast that. That's why they were going so far from the property line. Yet you don't have a problem with that?
Well, they were taking the golf course.
You can do it and they couldn't?
Well, I think it needs to be said that this is a concept plan. Those two units are not set in stone.
That's why we're having, that's why we're having this discussion.
So, that's the discussion going on this evening.
Okay. And I also have a problem too, again, I'm going to bring this up, with the safety of this road. This is a state scenic road. There are windy turns, Old Road, Dodge Road, and Daniels. Adding this many more families on top of the golf course, I mean, I think this is a major safety issue. When we went over again, I was talking about that before, and that was their reasoning for closing the course. Safety issues for our road. Now, we're adding 36 homes just as of tonight. So, 36 homes times two cars per home, so almost every home has two cars now, in addition to the traffic from the golf course. We already have issues now with the road, the traffic on it, people speeding. I mean, I don't understand why these things aren't being talked about or taken into consideration. I hope they are.
It is minus the restaurant traffic. I think we do have to consider that as well.
That's right. And we did, we did submit a, a traffic study that talked about the number of trips and the number of trips do not change substantially. Some cases, they're less and some cases, they're more. But in, in both cases, it's, you know, a little less and a little more.
Well, you want to elaborate on that?
Sure.
You may have already done this.
Well, is that a current traffic study or is that from window?
Well, the, the traffic, the traffic numbers are current, yes, absolutely.
We did update, we provided an updated traffic report from C D.
Okay, so that's, and it's not based on a 55 and over? I remembered the board that I had a number of questions and I reviewed them regarding the traffic study.
Right.
Which have not been answered because we're still trying to get to the concept plan, which is maybe 31 units or 40 or 32.
Which are under the traffic.
Which, which bears the traffic, so don't get too deep into, you know, those numbers tonight or at least fix them for tonight because, you know.
Don't change.
What's that? It's based on 40, correct. So, so for 40 units, the weekday morning peak hour was an increase of 16 vehicle trips per hour. The weekday evening was an increase of three vehicles per hour. And the weekend or Saturday, midday, which is the peak, was four or less trips per hour.
And this is based on 40 units, not 36?
Then window.
Does the calculation change when you...
This is, this is, this is...
Reduce units?
No, well, I know the answer to that is yes, but does it change if you go from single family to duplexes?
Uh, no. No, it's the same because it's a townhouse type unit.
Same bedrooms.
They use the same, same figures.
I just find that because I live next to an OSRD, I find that the calculations that are presented don't actually come up to the amount of traffic that does come and go. And I can see that off my kitchen window because I can see it. So, it just, okay, the traffic study says and they, they predict this, but people's circumstances in those homes can't be predicted like that, can they? So, you might have someone who's not really organized going out three or four times a day as opposed to the gas saving person who might go out once. But I think it's hard to pinpoint exact figure for travel because you don't, you can't understand all the circumstances that might occur to a family. Do you know what I'm saying?
That's absolutely true.
I think that all understatement...
These, these numbers are generated based on standards for traffic engineering. I mean, you might have someone that takes extra trips, like you say, that's not organized. But you, you also might have someone that closes up their house and goes to Florida and generates no trips. So, the, the best data that, that we have and that is used regularly in traffic studies is the IT, it's called the I T E standard. It's due for traffic engineers. And they have trips for every use that you can think of and it's based on study after study. So, it's the best data that you can have because these are proposed, proposed structures, non-existing structures.
Do they have trips for country club developments or they don't get that?
I'm sure that they do, yes.
No. Well, it'll be interesting now with those numbers.
They, they did.
Oh, okay.
I mean, I don't want, I, I prefer to have the traffic engineer here to defend his study. I'm just going through and picking off the parts that I, that I know. But they did, they did their numbers based on trips for a nine-hole golf course.
I'd like to make a follow-up.
Please, yeah.
Sean Lyons, 200 Dodge. So, we're talking about traffic. As mentioned, that thin windy roads, not so much where people are living here and it's built, but while it's being built, live trucks, cement trucks, straight trucks going down the street. Traffic going the opposite way, drivers, cyclists. Is there any thought about during construction, while it's actually happening? Is there anything to protect someone driving down the street while there's a truck going the one way and a car going the other? There's not a lot of room to go around a truck. I'm living here, I know.
A big suggestion. What we have done, similar, part of my back, on some, another project we currently have going right now is we have reduced the speed limits temporarily. The town's allowed us to put temporary reduction of speed limits, a bright orange speed limit sign, reducing the speed limits down, you know, from, you know, if it's 30 down to 20 or 25, whatever, during the construction. And, and it's noted, construction vehicles, reduce the speed. And this project that we're doing right now, Davis, we've had success. We haven't had many complaints and the truck drivers have been told to reduce the speed. So, we've done that and it seems to work in the past. That's a suggestion.
Our speed limit is 25 on our street. Have people adhered to that?
Well, I, I can only suggest to, to my construction people to reduce the speed and outpost the signs up and they'll be notified. I can't control the neighbors sweeping down the streets, please. That's the police.
And some mitigation, there's also has to do, do you have any suggestions about hours, you know? Trying to avoid frequent construction trips during hours that school buses or something?
Typically, construction hours is 7:00 through 3:00. That's typically when, when we work. You know, town, different towns may suggest, you know, 7:30 to 4:00 or, you know, I don't know.
And you do dust mitigation and so forth?
Yeah.
And what kind of dust mitigation would that be?
Well...
Because I'm living next to the water treatment road, a water treatment plant road that's being built in Raleigh and I can't take my dog on that dirt road because her fur is covered with some kind of chlorine mixture to keep the dust down and it's in her fur, it's in her paws. I can't take her out.
Typically, we have, you know, trucks coming in and out of the site. We, you know, we have a stone wear. Trucks move the stone tires, it shakes the dirt off. We also have dust control vehicles, you know, tank trucks that spray water. It would be advantageous to us to keep the dust down anyway because we don't want to impact the golf course during construction. So, we're going to take all those into consideration.
Typically, you pay for sweepers?
Oh, sweepers, we have sweepers. You know, we, we have our sweepers that we run down, you know, clean up the streets. Depending on the time of the year. You know, if we're in the wet months, obviously, there's more mud. And, you know, this year, it's been very dry, so, you know, we handle it appropriately. But we have all our, we have all our own equipment. We don't sub out the site work to site contractors. We, we do it all in-house. We're a fully functional site development company.
Any other questions?
Would there be a way to, for instance, make the Daniels for heavy trucking going out and Dodge heavy trucking coming in, so both going in the same direction, in opposite directions at the same time? It's, it's, it's the big trucks that are going down the street that are going to create an issue. Can you put no heavy trucking, for instance, going out?
Not necessarily a bad idea.
Yeah, I don't, we don't have a lot that shows with, I, I, I'm familiar.
So, you've got the fork.
Right. There's a fork. You can fork to the right. That's Daniels. That takes you down. Is there a farm or something down there?
There is.
Down on that?
Oh, yeah, good luck with that.
Your Harrods, it's very narrow there and also in the old wagon factory, Daniels is real narrow. And trucks going in opposite directions.
That's, that's, my Harrods, that's very narrow.
Yep.
I honestly think, and, and we can ask the traffic engineer and...
Yeah, we might get to that.
Yeah, to, to chime in on this, but I, I honestly think that Dodge Road is probably the best route in and out. And...
Going for 133, that it?
Correct. I don't think that you're going to have a lot of situations where you have trucks in a line going down Dodge Road. You, you are going to have a situation where, from time to time, that you have a truck, a truck. But that, that only happens instantaneously. And typically, that's not where, where issues arise.
Well, I know jogging down the street affects. I know that. I mean, I jog up and down the street a lot. Now, if there's a truck going one way, a big truck, I'm not talking about pickup. You know, around here, we have the, the septic tank trucks coming down the street. You go up that and then a car and then me and there's, there's not a lot of road.
And that also will be part of the, the working hours. I mean, you know, during working hours from, you know, 7:00 to 3:30 Monday through Friday, there's really not a lot of people jogging down the street. Maybe on the weekends.
There are a lot of people at that time and the buses start, send people down our street.
Sorry? Typically, we don't work weekends. No, I, it's, I found out in the past that having the guys work six days a week, Mondays, they're not in great shape. So, typically, we just work Monday through Friday.
Are there any other comments, questions?
Yes. If this project, if, or when this project goes forward, if something happens in the middle and it's not completed, is there any sort of bonding mechanism where the town or the bonding company can take over and at least finish the exteriors, finish the landscaping, finish the site work so we're not looking at a half-finished development?
Yes.
Yes?
We'll begin the bonds.
Well, we have required, we do require developers to put up money. We have, in the case of Fox Meadow that I referred to, we actually ended up taking, the town actually ended up taking that money finishing the landscaping. But could we thought about constructing in phases?
Yes, we are, we are. We plan on constructing in phases.
So, and I imagine you do the park closest to the road first and then, or would you? I don't know.
Right. Well, depending on the, the infrastructure and the sewerage and drainage and such, we plan on doing, I think we were shooting for two phases. It would be the whole right side, right around there would be the first phase and then the second phase would be basically cut off here at this point. So, sorry, Reggie, this would be the first phase. So, sorry, this would be the first phase here and then this would be the second phase here. We still have to build the.
If you didn't finish, do the second phase, if you didn't do it, I don't think that would make anyone terribly unhappy.
Depends on sales, but you still have to, you have to do the detention base and they have to do the septic. All the infrastructure, you probably have to, you'll probably do all the site work.
Yeah, the infrastructure will be done upfront.
We have to build the drainage in the sanitary system.
Right. We control the, we have the ability to control the issuance of building permits and occupancy permits for the individual unit. So what, the way it works is that if a developer wants a building permit or an occupancy permit before everything such as the landscaping and things are done, then he has to post a bond. That's how it works.
Then they get released.
Right.
As a condition to that.
And, you know, it worked in one case, the developer didn't finish the landscaping in mine and now landscaping.
Prefer not to do that.
Prefer not to do that.
All right, any other questions? Because I'm going to wrap this up, we have other business.
I just hope that there's more consideration being taken to the homes on the north side. There's not, no other home is being impacted except for the houses on the north side. I just hope there is some possible way, maybe some consideration taken without blasting, without being built on top of. And basically, the tree line that's there is as sparse as it is now without that being touched.
Well, we haven't said we agree with this concept yet, and we've already expressed our displeasure with the blasting. So hopefully, that issue's going to go away.
I think the petitions, the proponents have made it clear that in some form economically they would like to have thirty-six units. I'm not crazy about the blasting either. I think those are desirable units.
And we haven't even begun to discuss landscaping issues, which we're going to do if we get that far. So, you know, we can certainly require additional trees to be planted.
I mean, we have required in the past some pretty vigorous landscape, you know, plans.
Windover's plans were wonderful. I mean, they listened to and did what they were asked.
But I think, I mean, I don't know, I mean, this again is an attempt to actually preserve quite a bit of desirable open space. I know it's not, we're still working out the details as to how accessible it is. But remember, Windover, you know, they needed it, what, S6 Green Belt, part of it, and the rest was all homes. The yield plan, I don't think anyone here in this room would want, you know, forty-five homes. You've got an awful lot of grading, you think, you think you're going to have construction disturbance now.
Is there any way the town could buy the golf course? I have said this before.
What, buy it?
Buy the golf course.
The town doesn't even get enough money. People don't even afford the money for the schools, won't pass the time.
We want that rapid stream.
They would have to bond or pass overrides or.
Yeah, I mean, the CPA funds, I don't think, and I'm on CPA committee, I don't think they have that kind of money.
See, the state used to match that tax contribution a hundred percent, now it's twenty-five percent.
And the town has made a lot, done a lot of things with that fund, so I don't, they just don't have the money for this kind of thing.
I think it's probably not a priority to buy that right now. That's why SS Green Belt stepped in to run it. Go ahead.
Hi, David Delmonico, 175, George Hur.
Be nice though.
Hey. I have a problem with that because two years ago, we all voted as a town to give two million dollars to Green Belt and Mass Autobahn, Yonkers Meadows property. You know, so we do have money, which comes up on occasion.
Well, and I think it was two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, I don't think it was two million, but I could be wrong.
It was two-hundred-and-fifty, but the main property was two million dollars.
That was a collaborative effort between.
We do have money.
Well, the CPC committee is meeting at sometime in September. I mean, you know, that'd be, you know, if your interest is pursuant, that would be the thing you could do is attend that meeting and ask the question. I mean, that's not something this board would do.
It's a public, it's a public meeting.
Yep. So that's number one. Number two, I am incredibly, I am, traffic is very big concern to me. I have twins, I have a dog. That road gets traveled, Dodge Road gets traveled because it is a scenic road by bikers, I mean bicyclists, groups of bicyclists. During the summer season, when there's high traffic for golf, you add in trucks for the jogger and the dog walker and young kids on bicycles as well as cyclists on a road that was just paved two years ago and wasn't, and was paved by the town with the monies that it had that wasn't the best paving job, so it's already started to fall apart. You're going to bring trucks, and that road does get traveled by large trucks anyway because of the bridges now that they're open, and it's a cutway right through to Route One. You're going to add in these extra trucks and heavy equipment and delivery vehicles plus additional, you know, vehicles for thirty-six homes once it's completed. That road, you guys have said it yourself, has problems. You know, there should be something that you guys are talking about as far as road betterment. You know, we know there's a problem for people's feeding, and they're not necessarily people that live there, they are people that are cutting through. You're going to add in thirty-six more units, additional.
Well, you know, they're also, their bill of forty B has how many? Two, you know, that's not, that's going to add.
But you're also going to add that to the traffic that is there for the golf course.
You know, I hate to say it, but it's not as simple as I think you're making it sound. We can't stop development, first of all, and we understand that the traffic issues.
I'm not saying stop development. I'm saying make sure that the development fits the town's appeal.
Right, and that's what we're working on.
Fits the communities, the people that live there, their concerns.
But I just want to make the point.
Thirty-six isn't the number, if forty wasn't the number, then we have to come up with that number, and the developer's looking for that tonight.
I just want to make the point that this requires a special permit, this development, which means that we do have the authority to say no.
Understood.
However, if we say no, then it was alluded to tonight, this developer, some other developer could build the conventional subdivision. We lose our authority in a, we don't have that same kind of discretionary authority if they elect to develop this under the subdivision control law. We lose a lot of our leverage and bargaining position with the developer.
And respect, and respect to open space, et cetera.
Exactly, we can't require.
If it goes that route, we haven't gone there.
Well, I'm just saying, and there's also chapter forty B, which I really don't want to get into.
Which has already happened on Daniels anyway.
Right, we understand that.
So you're going to add that as well.
So it's not an all or nothing thing. We have, and our job is to find the most appropriate development for this area considering all the traffic issues and all the other issues that we're.
This town was quite different twenty, fifteen years ago. These subdivisions, this town, there's been massive areas that have disappeared, wooded areas, wetlands.
One of the reasons I went on the Conservation Commission was because.
Right, that's when I, you know, I was chairman for six and a half years and during, during the apex of development, it was tough to watch, but it bolsters, you know, Vice Chairman Pierce's point that we're not, we, no more than the Conservation Commission could say, no, you can't build this.
I'm not saying that. I'm not saying that at all.
We understand, we're trying to mitigate, and there's no doubt that the concerns about during construction always occur.
Yes, I'm living the dream with the water treatment plant.
They're probably putting a lot, yeah.
Fifty, sixty trucks a day.
I mean.
We discussed that.
Really, it's the dream.
I mean, I'm in the outline district with a garbage truck company, the same kind of where scenic road, so to speak, Boxer Road, and you can't, those businesses are grandfather as much as you may not think they're appealing businesses to have across from a town. Well, they were there, they have the right to be there, and the bicyclists on weekends, we see hundreds of them as well, they're probably on the way to your area.
So my question here then is, if this is acceptable, the thirty-six units, are there going to be discussions that are going to address things like traffic safety, things like road betterment?
They have an up-to-date traffic study. I would like to see that if there is any damage to, as you can see, the money that was spent by the town with obviously state money to do a bare upgrade to the road, it is, it is an upgrade from what it was.
Yeah, but it was a big upgrade.
If there, Mr. Graham is very concerned about that, that's why he's working at the expense of the developer to, he will address sightlines, address upgrades to shoulders and all these, you know, it is narrow when you're jogging or walking a dog.
And we went through this with Windover, and there were required betterments in the area of the Estert and Daniels Road. There was some lighting in the roads, I recall, line painting. But what we found when we did that, however, was considering the fact that the town's right away is pretty narrow all through there, there's not a huge.
Some taking, there's a lot of room, yeah, taking.
Yeah, absent a taking, which is not going to happen in this town.
That's right.
There's not a huge room for improvement, and that's very unfortunate.
Well, that's why.
And you don't want to do a tremendous amount of vista pruning because that becomes, you haven't even seen what happens sometimes when they prune for wires, you know? It's why it's nicer when subdivisions have underground utilities, so you don't have to go around and cut trees all the time in a weird way, you know? So it's all.
There's blind spots, there is a small S curve down by the farm, you know, it's pretty dangerous as it is.
We take all these factors into consideration when conditioning and taking bond money and so forth.
No, we are mindful of all those things, we really are, but, you know, we appreciate the comments.
That's why they're all being, and keep them coming, you know? All right, I think it's on the table. Any more comments from the board or and or Mr. Graham?
Well, I was going to suggest, I think the subcommittee meeting we had worked very well. So if the other two members of the board have no problem with it, I was going to suggest that we have another one, another such meeting to talk about this. But that's, you know, if you.
Can I, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sure.
Can I take a shot at addressing the concerns, talk to the developer, see if we can address some of these concerns and give you a couple of options to discuss?
Well, that's what I was going to get to. I think that'd be a good idea.
Yeah, that's time better spent.
You know, the question for the board members is, are you, is everyone okay with that? We can't, we can only have two board members present because of the open meeting law, otherwise, you know, we have a forum and that would be a legal meeting, so.
No, I want to move things along in the best fashion I want, you know?
But so that's what I would suggest as long as there are no objections.
You have any objections of, you know, Mr. Graham's meeting and these meetings on your dome? That's, they're not long, but I mean, I think it gets this feedback to continuing rather than stagnant.
Are you okay with that? Dave, are you okay with that?
Okay.
I might even let, I might even replace myself with David or something.
Oh, okay.
Because if he's to that point, I could hand the ball off, you know, with his experience and configurations.
And then Rich, I was going to ask you if you could, you know, think about what we're going to talk about tonight.
All that feedback.
And for example, you know, if you decide you're willing to make all those singles, devils, show us what that would look like. If you, if you like my idea about the big, show us what that would look like. If you want to throw in a hammerhead, show us what that would look like.
I'm not a big fan of that.
Yeah, okay.
But I can throw them out there and you guys.
And I'm not a big fan if I'm.
Can we discuss timing as to when we have that meeting and when we get Rich to get you the plan, just so that we can?
Soon as Rich, we do the meeting, as soon as Rich can, you guys can hash out, digest. I think you need to circle back to Mr. Graham with, you have something on the table that's dated August eighth, which is today. So I think.
So we could have, I have those sketches.
So I think the revision to this.
In the email by the end of the day and Monday.
Getting back to September.
Okay.
That's great. Doesn't even have to be hard, except you guys are.
It's easier for us to move stuff around because it's already emailed.
And as for the letters, the chairman was reading from the report of the last subcommittee, and we cover, the report covers everything that was said. So if anyone is interested in what was said in the next one, you can just press a copy of that.
You can come into the office and just get a copy. We have a town player, we have a town player now.
I can email that out too.
An email, we have, definitely, all this is public record. And you can see the layers of, this is the feedback that's happening and the goal is to have it, you know, get someplace so that we can agree and then start overlaying without, without, you know, waste the developer's money and or our time at your time, then overlay, you know, the architectural features, landscaping and so forth. But that's not going to happen, it's going to happen, but not at the, not right now because it's just not, that's wasting a lot of money that doesn't need to be wasted.
Mr. Chairman, can we talk about the schedule? I know the chairman said he would have plans by next Monday, the subcommittee met next week. Did you want to continue it to the twenty-second or shoot for September?
I would say September fifth.
Our next meeting's the twenty-second.
Well, it's really up to you, to you guys, if you think you can.
If you could review the comment and have a productive meeting, we'd love to be able to do it on the twenty-second.
I can at least come back and talk about the results and.
But since it's a continuation, can we continue?
Yeah, but look what happened last time, the thing, you know, Larry, the response.
Yeah, sure.
The twenty-seventh of July, that takes a little bit, a week.
Right, but this is now when you'd have a subcommittee meeting, so the response would be instantaneous, effectively, and it was pretty quick last time, we got the comments back because we were basically one or two days later. It was very fast. It's just because that's, you know, it's more dynamic when you do that versus having to go through a plan and add that passive review, but when you have a dynamic review, you seem to really have a product, have production that's pretty rapid. I mean, it's the board's discretion, it's just that, you know, given the time lapse, we'd love to be able to come in on the twenty-second because of the pressure we're getting, obviously on our other side.
I'll may, may not go as long as tonight, but.
Hold the twenty-second open.
Ready to just continue, right. We're going to be on that night anyway.
Or do you already have a seven forty-five scheduled for that night?
Eight fifteen.
Eight fifteen on twenty-second?
Yeah. It's a half an hour to spread. Which is going to take. Sure. And that may be continued based on whether.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, so if it's continued.
Continue eight then, eight, eight o'clock then.
Eight on the twenty-second?
Eight o'clock, yeah. Okay.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Good, Rich, keep going.
Okay. Thank you. And Katrina has, well, here's the traffic thing, right? You have all this?
Yeah, they found it, yeah.
So she's got all the latest, the original, but she has.
Yeah, and I know that there were comments made on that and we would, we will address them.
Yeah, Larry, okay. Keep your head.
Hopefully, between the twenty-second and the next meeting, we can address and deal with the, all the engineering comments.
And as, as Lee, you'll have all the dialogue with Larry.
Yes.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. The, the, okay, the feedback.
Change date.
So thank you all for coming. See you in a few weeks. Thanks. This should be quick, is Scott still around?
He's still here.
Scott, are you still around?
I am.
Looks like he's losing weight or something.
Yeah.
Without going in, there's a request, one of our conditions, this is in regards to three hundred new report term fight, Jell's Group LLC requests review approved, prior site plan review decision conditions for new tenants, we have a, does everybody read the memo?
C or something.
All right, asking for a convenience store, and I guess there's a franchise yogurt shop of your own, there comes, this one condition that I noted from Engineer Griffin, that said that the original approved in March, site plan approval, hadn't been reported, is that correct? There's a request there for six copies with the recording information from the Essex County, South Essex County Registry of Deeds.
Bob's supposed to do that?
You, anyone, lawyer?
Bob was handling that.
We don't, we don't, we sign them and turn them over and...
You get it registered.
But we can't, I, I can't proceed, because that was a, it hasn't been recorded, are you sure?
I'm not sure, I thought it was recorded.
Well, you have to, can you check the, can you check on that?
Yeah. Bob's supposed to handle all that.
That should've been in conjunction with the certificate of occupancy, for, you know, there's a big push to get the restaurant open and so forth.
Pretty sure it's for it.
That's a...
Usually, an occupant's department is in issue until, uh...
Yeah, so I don't...
Bob said he was handling it, and this is the first I know that he didn't...
So, there may have been a conversation or something that was handled with Ken, Mr. Ward, with Ken? And Bob's memo saying it hadn't been done, so...
Yeah, it's right in the letter, can you jot that?
That's why I surprised when I read that. If he's missing a signed plan, or if he's missing anything from us, he needs to follow up on that, but I don't wanna go further with more, we have to, we have to get that recorded, that was our condition for our condition, there was a rush, we know there were financial reasons to get the ball rolling, I mean, you had already put a lot of money into the property, and we need to get the restaurant open, but there'll be no more exceptions, obviously, because that's a condition, and the condition has to be met, for your, for your, for your protection and ours, so that our conditions have some teeth going forward on the title. It is a condition, it's right there, Bob, good reading, you're good reading.
Did you wanna give him any other direction, though, other than...
No, I just wanna bring that up, I'm opening it to the board now, you mean, so you said that the parking gets diminished, right, the parking?
Yep.
So I, does the board have any trouble, I mean, you have to deal with the Board of Health when you're doing that?
Yeah, they already signed off on the application.
They signed off on this one, so the only thing the board has to consider, whether or not, I mean, it's ongoing conditions, I think we went out of our way to phase this for economic reasons, for reasons of getting, recognizing that this is vacant, but not going to remain vacant, the, Larry, you made an observation that the parking seems to be working out, I don't, I, the times I've been there, it hasn't been overparked, there are issues, a couple of issues with people parking on the fire lane on the right side of the building, you know, going back, and the other was, you still have permanent signs, do you?
We do.
Did you see, you know, Larry, no, can you show?
We have all our signage.
The permanent signs?
Yeah, we have all our handicap, stop signs, do not enter signs, and our one-way signs.
The one-way signs and the no parking, fire lane, they're all permanent now?
Yeah.
Because that's a couple of weeks ago. They were still, they were still signs which were handmade, you know, painted on, on board.
Yeah, we ordered everything, everything's on order, we have everything, but those signs should be fine, it should suffice, they say the same thing as they...
You said, 'cause it depends on you for that, too, to get the permanent ones in, they're on order, still?
No, they're here, we have the other ones, because I had to pay back one of the do not enter signs to the, to the city, so we ordered them all at the same time, but there's only one, there's only two signs, one was a do not enter sign, and one was a one-way sign that is, that is, that was handed down, but they look authentic, I mean, they get the job done, I don't see why, why it has to be a permanent sign like you have to order, even though we had the sign, but what's the difference?
Is it permanent in nature, as far as holding up to the weather and everything?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
I didn't look at it that closely, I just noticed that they were not...
Oh, yeah, it's all on MDO, it's all painted on MDO.
They were not official signs.
It's a weatherproof product that we made it on, because I didn't know how long it's gonna be on.
I'll take another look if there's just two, and, and, you know, report back...
There's the one way going around the back, and then we actually have the real do not enter coming back that way, that's a real sign, do not enter, and the other one's do not enters to the left of where Kathy used to be, that's the only painted sign that we had, just a sign on the rail.
I'll take another look, report back before, another thing I observed, Scott, is that people are parking along the north side, where they're not supposed to park.
So, so I talked to the owners of the restaurant, that's who it is.
That's, I thought maybe it was their work.
It was the owners, it, well, it's actually the owners.
The owners.
There's two cars that parked there at the left, and I already told her, I said she can't park there again, because what we're gonna actually do is put a, another handicap van access right there, where that car is.
Okay, I'm talking about between the building and the stones, on the north side of the building?
Yeah, they don't park near the stones, they park in the back, on that side.
I, I've been there, they park all along that...
Maybe on a Friday night, maybe on a Friday night, but that's it, that's the busiest night, and it's...
They still can't do that. Not supposed to park there anyhow.
Right, yeah.
They can't park there, because of fire, they can't, we already went through that.
Okay, well, they can, they can park out back, it's only parking.
Right, that's, that's why, yeah.
I mean, I, I think the, as somebody said, it doesn't appear to be overparked, and the reviews that I'm supposed to be doing, ones due now, passing through actual, and I don't think myself or any board members wanna make any issues with respect to parking, if everything's working, but it's just parking in the wrong place, right?
I'll make sure they don't park there, I'll make the owners aware of it.
So we have to create a memo that, you know, we're not modifying the site plan at this time, that the convenience store and/or the yogurt shop are subject to the building inspector's requirements, and not us, in other words, we're not opening up the site plan review again.
Right.
Is that...
I mean, well, is the whole issue whether...
Signage, landscaping, we still have the ongoing phasing of the entire site plan that we approved in March.
Yeah, isn't the whole issue whether the parking line is gonna be adequate for the addition of these two new users?
Well, Bob did the count, said that actually reduced...
It's actually better.
Better than what Kathy was getting for?
Well, because it's a convenience store.
Did you read Bob's memo, Larry?
I'm trying to digest it, but I'm not gonna say tonight, I, I have, I just...
You wanna have some time, then?
Yeah, I can get right back to you, you know, by the twenty-second.
Do you need to know tonight?
Sooner.
No.
All right, we'll let you, okay?
No, I just, uh...
Of course, it's in our possession, and we have it, let him look at, let him look at it.
We do something by the twenty-second, that'd be helpful.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
All right, so, twenty-second, you wanna talk about this at seven, seven thirty?
What is it saying here that, that it hasn't been reported?
Second, look on the top.
Second page?
Second page, last sentence, but, however, condition two.
According to March two thousand and twelve planning board decision that the registry of deeds is not yet accrued.
Not, not septic.
I don't, I don't think he meant septic, because there is no septic.
This, was this registered, the decision?
And plus, condition two, we go to our decisions?
Yeah.
Is the condition that we want six copies of the decision.
Yes, it's two B.
That doesn't mention septic, right?
There's nothing to do with septic.
There's not doing a little septic, you know?
There's nothing to do with septic, that's why.
Yeah, yeah, well, I'll kinda put it in the septic line where it really refers to our situation.
That doesn't, that doesn't refer to the septic system?
No, because that's not the condition, we're not septic people.
Okay. You don't think he's talking about two C's?
I don't know, I just brought it up, I don't know.
Two C wasn't supposed to be reported to registry, but you're supposed to get approved design within six months.
Yeah, that was already done, we already have approved designs.
I would, Katrina could check with Ken Ward and see if he's got a copy of it.
I already told you, you have to...
Yes.
Should I do that for him?
You could just go online, too, the registry and deeds, to see if that's right.
Yeah, we're gonna follow up on that, you can follow up, but, you're not gonna, I'm not gonna, you know, my advice, you can't, this has to be done, you know?
Well, we're gonna do it, I was totally unaware that it wasn't.
Well, just read, read the condition of initial decision, it's pretty clear.
You already asked Larry, too, today, if he, if he approved all the conditions before an occupant's department was granted, remember when the...
It might have fallen through, with that, with our, with our situation in the office, and there's some things that may have fallen through, so I'm not, yeah, so, but in the future, it should, like I said, you know, we have to work in concert with the building inspector, so there's no, does anybody have any, just let Larry look at it, just in terms of, I don't...
No, that sounds good.
Okay, I don't know, I just don't see some, I don't, I don't see any problem.
Do you want to schedule seven thirty, August twenty-seventh?
Yeah, seven thirty, that's what I, that's...
Okay, so August twenty-second, seven thirty, Larry, that, that way you get enough time?
Yeah, okay, yeah, I'll get back.
If you wanna meet me over there anytime, you have my number.
Yep.
Call me, and I'll, I'll meet you over there.
So, your, your address.
Yeah.
Anything I send to board, I'll send to you.
Okay, and if you wanna do a site visit with me, just let me know.
Yeah, and then we'll obviously get a memo out, Ken, let him, get you.
But for right now, you don't see any issues, major issues with any, just the recording or something?
You know, we do have two papers signed, plans, I, I don't know how many you usually sign, but we have two of them.
I have one, it's not the plan that we're recording, it's the document, the decision.
Yeah.
Okay, that's right.
So you need, what is it, six copies?
That's what it states, I don't know what, Larry, why, why do you say six?
Proof of recording, you know, generally speaking, we get six copies, the planning board, the, the owner inspector.
Oh, I see why, oh, okay.
Myself, yeah, you're gonna end up hurting half a dozen copies.
Yeah, it's not a big deal.
Yeah. Important thing is, it's the recorded, it's a copy of the recorded.
Right.
The only way we can, you know, you guys decide to sell, we need this to go to the next door.
Or anyone wants to buy? I have the building.
Not this week, yeah, back as a water.
Does the restaurant know they misspelled the word restaurant on their tenant's...
They do know that.
I wanna go to a bank and...
It was the sign guy that signed it, missed that out.
I'm glad it was the sign guy.
First thing I saw, it was...
I'm glad it was the sign guy.
Sorry you were behind that.
That's okay, enjoy listening to them. So let's go through it, right?
Yeah.
So we're all set?
Yeah.
We'll see you on the twenty-second.
We're all set.
Seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, guys. Larry, we'll talk to you soon.
Okay, I'll be attentive.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Your bills payable?
Can you make a, a comment on that?
Sure, Ken.
Building, building inspector, as the planning board, is there a sign out from the planning board before he issues ACB?
Formally?
Yeah, in Ipswich, in Ipswich, every board has to sign off, the Concom, the Board of Health, the planning board, and if there's no, you know, if there's no Concom, and he just says, you know, not jurisdiction, but there's a check off.
Before?
Before the ACB is issued, and if that were the case, and this, and Katrina doesn't have the six, you know, copies, or one, of the recording, then she wouldn't sign it, otherwise, it's all gotta be left up to building inspector, because he's the only guy with the hammer.
And, and we have talked about, about that, because I know, right now, he can't go on and like, make sure all the conditions are met, say on four or six April, he needs someone from the planning board to go and do that, because every single decision has various different conditions.
Yeah, and the other thing, if it's a, if it's a planning board condition, it should be the planning board that checks off, and says, okay to move forward, or, okay to move, we've modified this, or give them another six weeks, or whatever they do.
I remember there was one, I just don't think it's been adhered to consistently.
I never remember.
I think, I've seen Ken has had a sign up, does he?
Oh, right now, the Conservation Commission, the Board of Health, and signs off, the Treasurers Department, the Water Department, the Municipal Light Department signs off.
But not us.
Right.
You should be on there, yeah, you should be on there.
It would be too cumbersome to have a ward have sign off, but now that someone's in the office.
Right. That's going to be up to me, I'll be talking to Ken tomorrow.
Great idea.
Might want to create a whole different process for the building permits, as in, drop them off, and then the town shuffle them around to different departments to get the sign offs, rather than sending people to different buildings around town, because it does involve four different buildings, various hours open, we've talked about having it all in the database, so that people can actually sign off on their computer.
I'm sure.
That's far in the future.
That can happen, that's okay, but it's better, I'd rather run the, run the thing around.
It gives also the building inspector comfort, something it needs.
And, and I don't think the chairman wants to sign off on everything that goes on, on a town, do you, I mean, it's like a four-man house, we have nothing to do with, but Katrina could sign off, and we have nothing to do with that, sure.
Right.
And Brent signs off on a lot of building permits that he has nothing to do with, but at least he's seen it and made sure, because who knows?
Like, look who catches these kind of things.
Right, yeah.
Point well taken, thanks.
So, put, put that on the list for future changes.
Only recently, really, I mean, I, I think there's been improvement, obviously Katrina did work at the building department with their databases and so forth, and built our own database, and getting, and talk, it's having, it's gonna take a while.
Planning board already has a database, but I just...
One more, one more thing.
Can we, I would like to, there's other business here, we can defer, you don't wanna defer them, but I think people are too tired to defer minutes.
I'm too tired.
I'm pretty tired.
I said I'd be home by ten.
I, I, you know, I did a write-off last night.
Don't let me down, I put all those minutes in there, you're not gonna leave in one?
They're not going, no, no.
We can do it on the twenty-second, when, when Brent continues.
Well, now I know, I don't need to get them to...
No, you do.
Yes, you do, you need to be on...
Now the people are gonna have, now the people are going to have extra time to read them, they're going to go quick.
Right.
I read them already, because I got them.
I do need this, so, wait, I want people, I, to sign, to sign any expenditures, please?
Um, I just...
H.L. Graham builds, or is that just me, expense update?
Let me get it first.
Katrina, can you summarize the correspondence quickly? I'm not gonna read it all, it's in people's packets.
What correspondence?
Uh, there's, there's, there's...
We don't need to do that.
Okay, I'm gonna do that on the twenty-second.
Actually, there's a couple that I, we, you do need to talk about, is when I resigned from the zoning review committee as administrative assistant, and the planning board needs to decide if they would like to recommend that I be appointed to the zoning review committee as a town planner, and the zoning review committee has already voted, and they're okay with the imbalance now of three people possibly from the planning board, as opposed to two from the board.
They're okay with it? Because if they weren't okay with it... Because if they weren't okay with it, I was gonna toss one of the planning board members or...
Well, is, uh, is Debbie Egan in the selectmen, are they okay with this, because didn't, didn't they have...
Oh, Mary was there.
Uh, you're right, he was.
There's no problem.
No, I never really thought there was a problem.
It was the ZDA that they were...
But didn't they have a problem with you being a town employee and, um, being a member of the ZRC?
Ken, Ken Ward is on it.
Yeah, that's true. I mean, I never had a problem with any of it, so...
We need a town planner man on it, because they're gonna actually kind of...
All right, well...
Where, where does the zoning ordinance come from, where is it written? Well, planning board.
Well, primarily, primarily by the planning board. Well, I, I'll make a motion that we point Katrina as a member of the ZRC or recommend that she...
Second it.
All those in favor?
I have.
No, I think that's, that's the way there's another problem, they make the presentation.
And I know...
And they actually, they actually are the ones that kind of have the time to translate all the suggestions with the writing and the proper formats.
I know Katrina needs, wants some time and direction for us on what she should be pursuing.
Yeah, and email me as well, because I talked to her, you know.
Set, we'll set that up for the twenty second, you've got plenty to do between now and the twenty second.
I'm sorry, set, what up for the twenty second?
No, any discussion has to...
You will be on the agenda for ideas of what...
Oh, okay.
The planning board wants you to pursue or ideas and so...
Does that mean you're not gonna talk to me tonight?
No.
Everybody wants to go home.
Remember, remember to go back to the, the, um, if you have a copy of, of the job description again, too. I do want to head here to prioritize what's in the job description. Can't devi, I don't want to deviate from that, Devin, we went through too much to get that from the personnel. All right, I have a motion to return, hopefully, anything to sign?
I just wanted, I hope everyone read the nice letters from Josh Morris. I just wanted to point that out, because that was...
And Josh was great, I mean, called, called me back up, asked for feedback, and offered his help in the future, if he so... Because I didn't...
Uh, I'm sorry, uh, there's more, Pat Moss Road Foundation. Um, we, we just received an email today, um, do, do you remember the road, the house I'm talking about, special permit you just approved on Pat Moss, Pat Moss Road? They, there's just gonna be a small change, the foundation was too shallow, and so instead of rebuilding a portion of it, they have to rebuild the whole thing. And so she asked if the planning board needs to do anything in the case of the special permit, and I was gonna suggest you might want to ask for a plan from that, and then approve it as a minor modification of the special permit, so you don't need a public hearing, but...
Well, we definitely don't need a public hearing.
And, and maybe schedule it for a certain date and time, and ask for a certain information from them, either a letter requesting it, along with a plan.
That's what I would like, and then it gives Ken a word of emphasis.
Yeah.
Because he needs a memo from us, along with...
Right.
So ask, yeah, and for a...
He's not gonna give you a letter, he'll allow them to have it.
Request letter and the plan.
And Brent...
They have, they have...
Remember, they also have to...
It says they're working on it.
They also have to bounce it up Brent, too.
Um, did you want to schedule it, so they know that they're, they're scheduled on a meeting date?
No, I don't think so, I mean, can I take up this other business?
Okay.
By the next meeting, depending on what our orders are, but it's okay.
And also market basket, did, you already did schedule that for a certain time, right?
Yep.
All right. And the only other thing is, I did receive proof of recordation of two hundred twenty-six to two hundred thirty Central Street, the A and R. Just wanted to tell you that.
On the yellow.
Yeah. Katrina, are you clear on the fee charged for download of my screen?
No, I am not.
She's following up tomorrow.
I'm not clear at all.
I've talked to her about it, she's following up tomorrow.
I think we reduced it to...
To five hundred.
But that's a moot point, because we also have to, and we're following up, there was a, uh, because of the complexity of the, you know, the proximity to one there.
Yeah.
There was, uh, there was review fees that were beyond a small deposit that she left for, you know, independent review, so Larry's bill. So, uh, Larry's bill has to be taken care of, and it's a time, so anything that reduction could go to that. Katrina's following up on that tomorrow.
So she still owes around seven hundred dollars after I, I actually submitted the twelve hundred original that she gave, even though it had been reduced to five hundred.
So we have to put another bill in, uh, yeah, that's what I'm sure.
From my understanding...
You've already said, you've already said your final terms, though.
Yeah.
And one more request, I'm still looking for the approved April twenty fifth minutes.
I didn't, I'm looking, but I haven't found anything yet, and Sarah had a great idea. Get ahold of TV, they have everything, right?
It's not on TV. No, I know...
They have it on disc, you can get it on disc.
No, I, I know that those minutes were approved at a meeting.
Right.
I know that much. I have a, a draft of the minutes that are very, they're the ones that I did, because I came to that meeting.
That's all I have.
And there, you know, there's lots of blank spaces, so something was approved.
Who loved it?
Karen Mino finished it.
I did, I was, I just happened to be there that night, so I took notes.
I didn't Karen finish them up?
I don't know.
Well, we wouldn't have approved the minutes with Black Peter.
I don't think so, yes.
I think, I think Karen did.
Karen finished it.
Yeah. I don't think she finished it, but...
Okay, because I, I would think that the board would get them, so they could approve them, and they did approve them.
What was the date again?
April twenty fifth minutes, yeah.
Actually, I think they were Karen's minutes, and we did approve, because I remember thinking that we would waste her due time.
No, I told Karen, Karen did, she was here.
No, she wasn't.
Yeah, she was.
No, I don't think so.
You were, you were sitting, sitting back in the audience.
I was a butter. Yeah, I don't think she was there. I don't think she was there. She wasn't.
Okay.
So just look...
We'll all look for them, follow them.
Okay.
Okay, I'll move to adjourn.
Are you finished?
No, but you can adjourn.
Okay.
Because I'll go on.
I second the move.
All those in favor?
I.
Thank you.
Thanks.